I would like to call the regular scheduled meeting for Fairfield County Council to order Monday, September the 25th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Before we get started, I would like to introduce Mr. Alex Hooks, who is here, the attorney, who is here in place of Mr. Morgan for tonight. Thank you for being here, Mr. Hooks. Next, we are down to pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand. I pledge allegiance to- Thank you. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on approval of the agenda. Next, we are down to invocation, Councilwoman Ms. Green.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we confess, we try to keep you close to us, but in the process, we push our neighbors away. We've been distracted in a distracting world and withheld love from each other and from you. Have mercy on us, O God. In your compassion, cleanse and release us from our sin. Create in us a clean heart, O God, and renew a right spirit within us. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes, and we will do all of these at one time. Public Service and Development, nine seven, 2023. Regular meeting, September the 11th, 2023. Administration and Finance, September the 18th, 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on approval of those minutes. We are down to number six, public presentations, none. Number seven, first public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Three persons signed up to speak. First person, Kathy Falk.
Good evening, County Council. My name is Kathy Falk. I'm a resident of Fairfield County and president of Hoof and Paw. In light of an important announcement, at the end of this meeting, I would like to say a few words about Mr. Bob Ennis, the Director of Animal Control. 2016 was a very important year for animal welfare in Fairfield County. Mr. David Brown resigned as Director of Animal Control, and a new director was hired to fill the job. I believe he stayed about three or four months, and to our good fortune, Mr. Ennis applied for the job and was hired. It was obvious from the beginning that Mr. Ennis did not take the position just to collect a paycheck. He had a very clear vision for the animals and the community in our county and was determined to bring about change. The job has not been easy, with some highs and many lows, but under the leadership of Mr. Ennis, the live release rates of adoptable animals in Fairfield County has grown dramatically. Ordinances were updated, and finally, dogs got off their chains and on humane trolleys, among many other important changes. All of these things that Hoof and Paw had been working on for quite some time. Even now, as he plans his exit, he continues to advocate for a new facility, a vet clinic, and once again, updated ordinances to strengthen our breeding and spay neuter laws to begin to control the overpopulation that we are now experiencing. Hoof and Paw shares your vision, Mr. Ennis, and we promise to continue advocating for change in your absence. It is our hope, County Council, that you will learn from this loss and embrace Mr. Ennis's vision as your own. To you, Bob, I would like to say, on behalf of Hoof and Paw and many others, I'm sure, bravo and thank you for your leadership, your hard work, your dedication, and compassion. You are valued more than you know, and you will be missed greatly. Thank you.
Don Goldbach.
Good evening. My name is Don Goldbach, District Two, and I've missed the last several meetings. I was out of town, so I apologize in advance if the subject I'm about to bring up has already been dealt with, but I don't know, because like I said, I've been absent. And I want to address Agenda Item Number 16, County Council time. What I'd like to understand is how the second comment section was removed from the agenda, and more importantly, when it will be added back. I looked at the Fairfield County Council bylaws, which are published online, and Paragraph 13 states that the agenda shall be as follows, and it has seventeen, eighteen different items. Number, well, two of them are actually public comment sections, so there's two public comment sessions in that agenda. Now there's only one, so I'd like to understand how that was removed. Paragraph 14 does allow council to modify the agenda, but it has to be done at an official meeting, has to be properly moved and seconded and voted on by a majority. So the other thing is Paragraph nine states that official action may only be taken at regular meetings. And my understanding was this item was, it just disappeared. It didn't happen at a regular meeting, so I respectfully request that we hear how that was removed and when it will be put back. Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. I'd like to direct my comments once again to the Economic Development Strategy update. When I approached this subject well over a month ago, I reminded everybody that broadband and internet accessibility are keys to economic development. Someone else didn't realize it was, and they cut me off. So I'm going to venture to broach that part of this subject again in hopes that we've learned and done our homework and understand that access to broadband is important to every single resident, every future business, every single business right now. Only thirty-nine percent, according to the state, of our county has sufficient access to the internet. Only thirty-nine percent have access to education, have access to the wide world of the internet. Only sixty-one percent of businesses can access the internet to sell, buy their supplies. And then we wonder, well, what can we do? Now, I go back to what can you do, council? You can follow the example that is set by other councils. If you remember, there was a time ago where there was a bold council that went to the state through our delegation to ensure that we get Providence Hospital here today. If they did not reach out to the state, we would not have a hospital in Fairfield County today. It was that big a deal, and they had to go before, the delegation had to go before the entire legislative body to make that movement. Another time, a bold and proactive council went to higher authority to move ahead was when, and I think we still have some members of council on this, on that team, that went to Washington and reached out to Washington to save Element. What a major piece to our economic development, and it worked. It was saved. Now, that probably wasn't the only factor, so there's a lot of bold things you can do. No, the county can't afford broadband, but yes, the county can't afford a council and a government that sits on their hands while only sixty-one percent of this county has access. That's going to hurt the people that are living there, and that's going to stunt growth and opportunities for us. Please, follow the examples of your predecessor and reach out to higher authorities to move the ball forward. Thank you for listening.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to Item Eight, Public Hearings. Item A, An Ordinance by Fairfield County Council Approving the Conveyance of Property by Fairfield County to the Fairfield County Forfeited Land Commission and Other Matters Related Thereunto. This public hearing will open at 6:12 PM. Dr. Roberts, anyone sign to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. My concern is not so much the exact process is listed on this agenda as far as the Fairfield Land Forfeiture Program, but how does that program, we haven't really heard any type of cohesive and comprehensive statement or vision of how to utilize that vehicle. And there are many options to utilize that vehicle. It can be to fit the puzzle, fit the pieces to the puzzle together in a comprehensive plan. As land comes available, do we want to get, hold on to those pieces of land and use it for a specific development? Are we going to advertise this, this land for resale? Are we going to look to other ways to development? What is the exact goal of, and I know there's many, so what is the comprehensive goal of this vehicle to use? And there's obvious uses for it, but it's got to be a total fit to our total plan, and we've got economic opportunities galore facing us with a scout, and this could be a vital piece to use, not just kind of, it seems like it's just kind of piecemeal, whatever comes up, not a cohesive plan. Well, maybe that's because we don't know. Maybe you do have a plan, but let us know how we're going to leverage the land forfeiture program for economic growth. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We will close this public hearing at 6:14 PM. Item B, An Ordinance of Fairfield County Council Authorizing an Amendment to the Agreement for Development of Joint County Industrial Park by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Kershaw County, South Carolina, Providing for the Inclusion of Additional Property in Kershaw County as Part of the Joint County Industrial Park and Other Related Matters. We will open this public hearing at 6:15 PM. Anyone sign to speak?
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Again, what are we doing? What's our expectations here? We keep seeing these agreements with other counties, and obviously, they're good ideas, but what are our expectations that we're going to get out of it? What can you convey to the public? This is what we should expect to see. This is what we will gain specifically. What is our target goals? If you don't have goals, if you don't have visions, then it's, it's just stuff coming down from the sky. Yeah, and it's kind of automatic that we sign these agreements, but how, again, how can we leverage them? And what, what can we do to make expectations actually come to life? What can we do to follow along, to ensure that, that what is happening, that we are meeting our expectations for the improvement of life? Just signing these agreements, that's like just a store opening the doors. We're open for business, but there's no specifics to it, and that goes to, you know, we, we don't have an economic plan, haven't had two or three years, and, and that's why we're just kind of rudderless. We, we just see, well, we've got this, we've got that, but we don't see that there's a big puzzle with all the pieces being put together to it. All we do is just see the pieces scattered about and never have any real purpose and never have any real direction and never have any real follow-up. So let us know the expectations of this ordinance. What do, what is the public, what is the county going to get out of this, and what can we expect? Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We will close this public hearing at 6:17 PM. Next, we are down to Item Nine, Ordinants, Resolutions, and Orders. Item A, Third and Final Reading, Ordinance 822, An Ordinance Providing for the Purchase and Acquisition of Security Systems, Motor Vehicles, and Related Equipment to Be Used for Public Safety and Public Works and Other Equipment, Authorizing the County Administrator to Prescribe the Form and Details of the Lease Purchase Financing of the Equipment, Providing for the Payment of the Lease Purchase Financing, and Other Related Matters.
Most to approve, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion on Ordinance 822? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on Ordinance 822. Item B, Third and Final Reading, Ordinance Number 823, An Ordinance by Fairfield County Council Approving the Conveyance of Property by Fairfield County to the Fairfield County Forfeited Land Commission and Other Matters Related Thereto.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing there is no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on Ordinance 823. We are down to Item C, Third and Final Reading, Ordinance 824, An Ordinance for Fairfield County Council Authorizing an Amendment to the Agreement for Development of Joint County Industrial Park by and between Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Kershaw County, South Carolina, Providing for the Inclusion of Additional Property in Kershaw County as Part of the Joint County Industrial Park and Other Matters and Other Related Matters.
Move, Mr. Chair?
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams, just very brief, I think Mr. Morgan made a statement at one of the past meetings that when Fairfield County joins in one of these industrial parks, I, I don't think it's really nothing involved, except we receive a one percent amount of the total, of the agreement, if that is correct. Just wanted to put that on the record?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Kershaw is adding a different, an additional property to the current multi-county industrial park we have. This agreement is just allowing that property to be added. The county will receive one percent of that tax revenue.
There's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on Ordinance Number 824. Item D, Second Reading, Ordinance 825, An Ordinance by Fairfield County Council Authorizing the Purchase of Real Property That Meets the Necessary Requirements for Said Property to Be Used as a Suitable Location for a Wastewater Treatment Site With Discharge Into the Broad River and Other Matters Related Thereto.
Solo. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion on Ordinance Number 825? No discussion, all those in favor of 825?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on Second Reading of Ordinance 825. Item 10, Board and Commission Minutes, none. Item 11, Board and Commission Appointments, none. Item 12, Old Business, none. 13, New Business, Sheriff's Office Radio Maintenance Agreement Renewal, and this is a action item. Ms. Williams or Ms. Johnson, do you want to comment?
Good evening, Council. We have Ms. Terry Smith here from the Sheriff's Office. This particular request went to the Administration and Finance Committee meeting, and it was approved to go forth to council, so I have Ms. Terry Smith here to explain this particular request.
Good evening, Council. As she said, I'm Terry Smith, I'm with the Sheriff's Office. During our budget preparation, we left off something, an item which we need to get our radios upgraded and flashed in order for them to continue to work. That cost is going to be $23,832.76. We also would like to take out a maintenance agreement. Our radios are older now, and the warranties have expired, so we would like to add an annual maintenance agreement, and that cost is $21,024. The total request is $44,856.76.
Any questions by Council?
I just want to, if you, if we don't do this, radios are cut off, correct?
Correct.
No good.
No good.
I know from experience, they're expensive. Back in the day, I think they were like $8,000 per radio.
Correct.
What are they now?
The mobiles, well, the walkie-talkies are running around eight still, and the mobiles are a little bit cheaper. They're probably around six. So this will keep our radios going for some time now, a couple more years.
I'm sorry, how many will be, does the contract cover? How many radios?
For this contract, it's going to be seventy-two radios. We have some others, but they don't need upgrading at this time, so it's seventy-two right now that need to be upgraded.
Ms. Ms. Green?
I think the other thing that needs to be clarified is the budget, how the budget process will work for this addition.
Yes, ma'am, there's a contingency that's in our budget, is normally put in there every year for things such as this that occur, and we didn't expect it, so the unexpected, the unforeseeable, so we do have the available funds in the current budget.
Ms., anybody, Ms. Smith, once this is done, do you have like a forecast of how long it would last before it was done again?
I don't. I apologize for that. It, they kind of do like a five-year plan that they run out, so I, I would think we'd be good for the next five years on these radios.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
There's no other discussion, no other questions. This is a action item, so everyone that's in favor of this radio maintenance agreement and the calls to update the radios, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on the Sheriff's Office request. Next, we are down to fourteen, County Administrators Report. Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams.
Again, good evening, Council. I want to introduce you to our new EMS director, Mr. Tim Martin. Would you please stand? He's the former EMS Deputy Director, former EMS Interim Director, and he has proven to be an effective leader, and I thank him for accepting the position. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin, do you have anything that you want to say? You don't have to, I'm just giving you the, the floor if you wanted to come up and say anything.
What's his name again?
Hello, again, my name is Tim Martin. I have been appointed the new EMS Director for Fairfield County, and I just want to take and extend my extreme gratitude to the administration, to County Council for all that they've done for EMS. We are here for our community, and we are wanting to take and put forth a better foot and a better response over the last several months. We have actually decreased our- We have actually decreased our response times, which is something we're extremely proud of. The last quarter, we've dropped our response times by a minute and ten seconds. While that doesn't sound like a lot to the normal layperson, that is an immense amount of time that we have shaved off our responses, and I'm very proud of our crews for taking up and stepping up to the goals that we have of providing better for our citizens. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. I think one of the council members.
It's just me. How many people are you short now? I know you've been short, are you still short?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we are still down fourteen openings.
Does that mean you don't have anybody out there at the substation in Fishterville?
Currently, again, our, we've changed some of our deployment monitoring. What we're doing now is we are kind of moving some units around to provide better coverage to our response areas, which is what we're seeing now with our decrease in response times. We're actively recruiting, we're out a lot of what I call grassroots approach. I am visiting potential EMTs in their classroom setting, not only to show them what Fairfield County is about, but what EMS is about as well. It has been very fruitful for us. We've gotten a lot of interest. We are usually receiving one to two applications every week or so. As soon as we get those in, we are interviewing them as quickly as possible, and we have currently brought on several PRN positions, which has helped and supplement our openings in our full-time role.
Where's the closest school to go to be an ENT or E, whatever you call it?
So currently, Midland Technical College does provide education. We are working with our South Carolina EMS Association, also with the South Carolina Fire Academy, to see what we can do to actually get classrooms or classes closer to our area. We are working with the EMS Association to become a training hub for them for when they take and do asynchronous learning classes they are putting on through their academies. We're going to actually become a training hub for them, which is going to bring in potential employees for us.
Are you cross-training the firemen and the EMTs?
Correct. So currently, we are meeting with Chief Webb. I know he's got some new firefighters that's been hired. We are working to start providing with EMR classes. Also, we're going to be working back with our rescue squad that's here in Fairfield County to take and provide educational opportunities for them as well.
Ms. Laura, this Midland Tech out here, is EMS classes offered out there, are they offered out there or not?
At one time, I think they were, I'm not sure.
Yeah, they were at one time. One of the things that we're just really working on is trying to get the word out there. We're going to be more in our community, that's one of the things that I have stressed to our staff and to our members of management, that we are wanting to be more proactive and more grassroots approach. You're going to start seeing us more out in the community, being at special events to try to take and obtain and drum up interest. We are working with the school district. We're actually going to be doing a project with them upcoming in a couple, couple of weeks. We've also now been invited by that conversation to speak more with the school district, to where our future plan is actually to try to take and get an EMT program into Fairfield County School District and into the school system to get them while they're in high school. Because by getting them in high school, then we're going to be able to take and provide them with that education and a career, so when they get out of high school, they'll be more of a hire pool for us to be able to get from.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Also, counsel, I would like to recognize Mr. Bob Ennis. Mr. Bob, will you come up? He's our animal control director for the last seven years, and he's decided to leave us effective October sixth to enjoy his federal retirement. Prior to coming to Fairfield, Bob worked for a nonprofit in West Columbia. He travels every day to Windsboro because of the love for the animals and the respect for those owners who truly love and care for their animals. His hobby is target shooting, which I guess he's going to take advantage of that now after October sixth. Bob, on behalf of Fairfield County, it's truly been a pleasure working with you. I thank you for your commitment and your dedication to this county. I will truly miss you. We tag-team a lot of things together.
We certainly do.
But I wish you the best in all of your future endeavors.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, I just personally want to say thank you for all that you've done for Fairfield County in my little short time of working with you. It's been a pleasure, so enjoy your retirement. Don't forget about us, come back to see us every now and then.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, no, Mr. Ennis, I'd like to echo all these positive comments about you. I just, I really, really hate to see you leave. I understand, I truly understand, but I just want to thank you so much for your dedication to the citizens and to the animals and how much you mean to this county. You'd truly be missed, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Certainly, thank you so much, Mr. Ennis, for all that you've done. We appreciate your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ennis, I've known you for a long time, and I just want to say thank you for your dedication to Fairfield County and to the animal shelter, and I wish you the best in the future. Thank you very much, thank you.
Members of council, we just want to give you an update on the next steps related to the Economic Development Strategic Plan. We'd like to pull together the Economic Development Committee to finalize the goals and action items in the Economic Development Strategic Plan. Although it is a committee meeting, we will be inviting all of council to attend. That way, you can at least hear the discussion on the final goals and action items associated with that. We're also going to look for a standing meeting date with committee members so that we can continue to work on any next steps associated with the action items and the goals within that strategic plan. So just be on the lookout, we'll be sending out a meeting notice and trying to get a standing meeting date monthly to keep the Economic Development Strategic Plan moving forward with that committee.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Williams, for the county administrators' report. Now we are down to fifteen, clerk the council's report, none. Item sixteen, county council time, any council members wish to speak? Ms. Green.
First, I'd like to congratulate Shiloh First Presbyterian Church USA in Windsboro for holding their one-hundred-and-forty-fifth anniversary celebration on Sunday, October first, at three o'clock. The River Road Fire Station will be dedicated with the ribbon cutting on October fifth at eleven AM, so the public certainly is invited to attend. I also would like to report back to you, we were, a couple of us were invited by Representative McDaniels, Diana White from the Transportation Department, and I went to a session called Electrifying the South Collaborative. It was a conference in Savannah, Georgia, September fourteenth and fifteenth, and what it was charged to do is get many counties and municipalities ready to apply for grants, and I want you to know that there are some grants, when we talk about electrification, that are cost-sharing, and certainly, they wanted us to know about those opportunities and also the fact that some grants are more in the form of tax credits. So they also wanted us to know that. And what do you mean by electrifying the South Collaborative? Essentially, in the future, we have to kind of look at the infrastructure that we have for electric vehicles, and whether or not we can include electric vehicles in the fleet of cars that are purchased in the future, and how we go about doing that. So it was really a very interesting session. It was really very interactive. There was a lot of learning opportunities as to what a number of counties are currently doing to integrate electric vehicles into their fleet of cars. The fact that there are purchase opportunities in terms of grants, that will help a lot for us to try some of the electric vehicles in the future. Thank you so much, I was very honored to attend, and it was a very informative session.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Any other council members wish to speak?
I do.
Ms. Waringen.
I have several things that I want to talk about, but I was just going to elaborate on what Ms. Green was talking about, the electric vehicles. I was in the co-op meeting this afternoon, and we were talking about electric vehicles. There is a Volt vehicle that's for sale, and it's like thirty-one thousand. Well, I have a copy of the invoice for the replacement battery for the Volt, and it's twenty-nine thousand eight hundred. So, you know, I don't know about the electric vehicles and how it's going. I know it's going to be a whole lot of stuff for us to provide the electricity, but anyway, that's another subject. I just, I've got three or four things that I want to talk to you about. Okay, so first, we are, the Fairfield County Code Red Alert System, we found out about this at the, I guess we found out about it at the meeting on Tuesday night, because that's another subject. But anyway, so it is, if you haven't signed up, if you have a landline, you're automatic, but if you, if you don't have a landline, you have to sign up for it, for you to get it on your telephone or text message, you can get it on hearing impaired devices or an email. You decide how you want to receive it, and it's no charge, but this is like, if there's a tornado coming, severe weather, somebody is loose, a manhunt or a missing person in your area, you hear the dogs barking out back, and you think he's chasing a squirrel, but it's really somebody trying to get in the barn, hiding from the police, and so you would, you would need to know that so you could, you know, lock your doors. It's a very good thing, evacuation notices, so if, you know, the nuclear plant's getting ready to blow up, you know, we can leave out there and head north, they go somewhere. But anyway, it's a really good thing, and all you've got to do, oh, and there's three cell phone numbers that, once you get signed up, you would need to put them in your phone, and it would be code red, so it wouldn't be like it was a call that you don't want to get. You get a lot of those, and you could answer it or, you know, get the text message. So, I guess you go through the police department to do this? Yes, no, wrong?
No.
Nine-one-one, okay. It's the nine-one-one woman, okay, all right. And she's right over there if you need to talk to her about it, but it's a really good program, and it, and we need to all do it, okay? And so the next thing I want to talk to you about is this class that we're doing on Tuesday nights, it's for six weeks, and it's through, it's the Citizens, Fairfield County, something, Citizens Academy, and this is number eleven, and it's every Tuesday for six weeks, it's from six-thirty to eight-thirty. And last week, we were like, we were the good guys, and the police people were the bad guys, and they were out there in the car, and it was dark, and the lights was flashing, and so, and they gave someone a gun, I don't know if it's a real gun or not, because they wouldn't give me a gun, but anyway, and I tell them, just shoot them when you walked up there, it just didn't matter. But it was like you were making an arrest, and it's dark, and the, and the windows are dark, and, you know, just think about the police when they're walking up there, they don't know what they're going to get into, and so they were, the one, the one thing that I took away from it was, well, I took a lot away from it, but if you get stopped, put, leave your hands on the wheel, and put your side windows down, and turn your dome light on, so that the policeman knows you're not going to shoot him when he walks up there, because he doesn't know what he's going up there for. Like they said, you know, he might have killed somebody two counties over, but the policeman's just stopping because he's got a taillight out, but he doesn't know why he's stopping, so he's just going to shoot him when he walks up there. It's a very good class, and I wish all of you would sign up for it. Their next class is January the twenty-third, so it gives you a lot of time, you get over Christmas, you can do all that, and you can just sign up for it, and I guess it's through, you just let Ms. Terry over there know. Okay, and the next thing I want to talk to you about is Fairfield Electric gave the roundup, and I told you all this, this last year, ten thousand dollars, and that is to buy smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms. And so, and they're free, and I signed up a lot of people back last year. All you got to do is call the fire, fire services, or whatever the name of that place is, it would be whatever his name is.
Mr. Jamie Webb.
Jamie, yes. And you just got to know how many bedrooms you have, and your telephone number and your address, and they come out, and they style them, and they're free, and they're the smoke alarms, and so your grandmamas, your granddaddies, your parents, you know, your children, they need to be in your baby's rooms. If you don't have them, they are free. All you have to do is call them, and they will come and put them in. And they just got ten thousand dollars, so I know they got some money. And this is the last thing I'm going to talk about, and this probably, y'all not interested in, but I'm going to tell you anyway. If you can see up here, and I've got some extra copies of this if anybody wants them, but the blue part is Newberry Electric, that they do the power, and that is from kind of right past Salem Crossroads, just a little bit, maybe half a mile, and from there, all the way onto the bridge, and the northern part, and then down here, and they have gotten a grant or whatever, I don't know what you would call it, but they're going to get, they were one of five rural communities from the Midwest to the East Coast, only one, and they're going to get five batteries, and I don't, I assume that it's because we are kind of over here, Newberry's kind of over there, and they're secluded, and maybe when their power goes out, they don't get it back on as fast as like the co-op, because we're kind of all right here, but their local residents are going to have a chance and a choice to work on this with them, so that's, that's, that's really good. I mean, you know, I think it's a wonderful thing that Blair got recognized out of the whole United States. I mean, maybe just because it's rural, but anyway, and, but all these people here, any of them that I guess want to, are going to be able to help with this five battery thing. So if anybody lives out in Blair, besides me, but I'm not on the Newberry Co-op, I've got some maps if anybody wants to know about it, but I think that's a really good thing. And that's all I got.
Ms. Waringen, Mr. Roof.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I promise I won't take as long as Ms. Waringen, sorry. Anyway, no, just can, is, can we, I don't know if you can want to address tonight, or maybe on the next council meeting when Mr. Morgan is here, but to address about, what was brought up about the second comment session, whether, how it's taken out, just, just if we could address, just address that, clear that up. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Roof. Thank you to all the council members. I don't know if y'all received the message today, but... received the message today, but Mayor Greg Yen Yard did send a appreciation for the intergovernmental meeting last week, and wanted to thank everyone that attended, and said it was a very productive meeting for all the different municipalities and the school district to get together, come together, and come up with ideas on how to better Fairfield County. So he wanted to thank each and every one of you. The, the only other thing I got to say is, I want to thank each and every citizen or individual that's here tonight, and appreciate you coming, giving your input, and being courteous to everyone in attendance. We have no executive session for tonight. Now we are down to item eighteen adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved in properly, seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero to adjourn. We are now adjourned.